I'll call the November meeting of the Huntington Township Planning Commission to order.
Ted, before you go on, I just want to apologize to everyone with the agenda. I sent it to the webmaster a little late on Friday and she didn't get it posted. So it wasn't posted till 10:00 AM this morning. So I just wanted to apologize to everyone for that. And Roxy, if you can make that sunshine act violation.
Go ahead.
Well, we'll be okay going forward though. You'll get that, okay? Thank you.
Ted, I expect immediately I'll be resigning as a member of the planning commission.
Well, we thank you for your service for years you've spent.
Thank you.
Thanks, Ron.
Okay.
Yeah, it's... I guess while we're... Since Ron resigned, we're going to let everybody know we'll be asking for letters of intent for replacement. And I think we'll request them to come back in by the end of... I think by the end of January. By the end of December is going to be with the holidays and everything. It might be a little... We can function as a sixth board and commission as long as we have four... We have four votes for quorum, so...
Do you want to say the end of January or the January meeting?
January meeting, yeah.
Okay, that's what I thought.
So like a week before the January meeting? We have to have it, we should have it.
Yeah, that's probably good. And have it a week before the January meeting so we have them in here. But we'll make a recommendation. We'll review them and make a recommendation to the board of supervisors at that time.
Would you like that from the website?
Yes, definitely. People aren't going to know about it otherwise.
Yep. Okay. Okay, the next item of business on the agenda is public comment on the agenda items. Anybody have any... And what's on the agenda? If not, moving on, approve the minutes of the October meeting. Has everyone had a chance to review? Minutes as submitted?
Yes.
Yes.
Not hearing any opposition to that.
I'll make a motion that we approve the minutes.
I'll second it.
Okay. Made by Tom, second by Kyle. All who's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
So moved. Uh, zoning offers in the group report.
I'd been pretty quiet so far. Looking back in October, there were three zoning permits issued. There they are. One for Loop Top Solar and two for buildings. We also received... It's not a conditional use. We had them recently made as requests. It's a special exception for the Chapel Hill Church of God. They want to change the personage into a group facility for women and children. No date has been set yet for that hearing. And the zoning hearing board that met last week for the Susquehanna Quarter Midget Association Dirt Track Racing denied their appeal. I guess we're waiting to hear back what they decide they want to do for their next step, if they want to pursue it again in another avenue or another law. You know? It was just the hearing was just last week.
Uh, next is your engineers' report, so...
Okay, all that work we did for a year and a half on the SADA, that's coming up for the supervisors next weekend. Current plan's been reviewed. The Ballinger subdivision, that's on the agenda for review tonight. EB clearing on Old Harrisburg Road. Waiting to see what property owner plans next. He wants to try and resubmit for some other proposed use. And the Condeservance Single Family Land Development Plan. We received a letter granting the township an extension of review time. And I've given you all copy of that in your packet.
And that extension is till 2/19?
Yes.
Okay. And then on EB clearing, do they realize they need an extension if they're gonna... Uh, 1/8 comes up pretty quick during the holiday season. Okay. And they understand that? Okay. All right. Thank you.
Ted, it's Scott. Okay, moving on to new business. It's a Damager five lot subdivision. We should have Scott's comments.
Oh, y'all know this, dude.
Hi.
I've got some plans here to show you.
These are the ones that Scott reviewed last night.
Can you give us your name, please?
Yes.
Tyler Keller.
And you were...
AZ Land Consultants.
And to see...
AZ, it's a long one, yes.
Sorry, what was your last name?
Keller.
Keller. Land Consulting. Okay, thank you.
Yep. So it's not actually five lots, it's going to be three lots. You see from the parent tract map here, they're splitting a lot off on this side of the road and two lots over here. And they... This lot here is the only lot that is going to have any chance of further subdivision to, you know, become a residential lot down the road.
Which lot is that?
Lot three. The rest of them are posed just for agriculture. They're agricultural now, but the only one that's going to have potential to be subdivided would be lot three.
So that's 20 acres over there and 38 and 27?
Yes.
So lot three is how big, how many acres?
20.8.
20.8.
20.8.
Yeah, 20.8. What subdivision opportunities does that lot have?
Two lots may be subdivided off of lot three in the future if the property owner chooses.
Both buildable?
If it meets all the requirements, it's in the subdivision, maybe one of them will be.
Yes, okay.
We'd have those soil testing and all that, though.
Septic tests and stuff like that.
Yeah. Yeah, this is already split by Harrisburg, Old Harrisburg Road. And you've used that line to create a straight split back between those two. So, you know, what, is that a 50-foot line?
50 foot, yep. That was preexisting there before subdivision.
What was a 50-foot preexisting?
There's this chunk here that's access into this back section of the flag pole.
Yeah, all right, okay.
I have one comment. The changes in the site paperwork here, there's changes made.
Yeah. Changed the number of main lots to two and added the note, lot three may have a maximum of two lots subdivided from it. And they got rid of the note and moved the... This lot shall carry with the right of further subdivision down to lot three, the one that was supposed to be one. Yes.
Okay. And this letter's in my review letters in your packet. And also we received a review letter from County Planning this morning.
Okay.
So that's true consideration in your packet as well.
Well, since we didn't say it, we would have only seen it until last minute. Why don't you give us a synopsis of that?
Maybe the reviewer will have to... Teach your comments.
So the first comment they got is they want the name and address of the subdivision and developer put on there and a phone number. Just had to add phone number down there too.
Okay, so you already addressed... Have you addressed all of them?
I addressed all of them, yes. There's only one that he commented on that I had to... We had to call him about today to get some clarification on. And he was saying about, it was about the...
He being Andy Murlock?
Yes.
He's here, he's our boss. That's Andy. So don't criticize him.
About the flagpole lot?
Yes.
Is in the ordinance, it says about like, uh... It would have to be like a residential lot, which makes it a maximum of two acres. But we weren't sure that, you know, being that it was already created, you know, that access was already there.
Yeah.
Whether that's, you know, being that it's not going to be subdivided at all or be residential lot if that was going to be an issue.
What'd he say?
What it said was that the fact that you have flaglot standards in your zoning ordinance is a remnant of a transition from not having zoning to having zoning.
Right.
As we discussed with the... When doing the SADA, there's a number of things that are in your zoning ordinance that probably shouldn't be.
Right.
And there's cleaner ways to handle that than the way it's handled now. If it's, if you consider it the... If it's not being subdivided, then you probably consider it the parent tract, in which case it's an existing condition. But again, if it's... When it's worth a subdivision, that's different sort of... If it's a hearing now, that this subdivision's going to be on the other side.
Yeah, that lot's subdivided.
Then it's, you would consider that parent tract and done.
Redone. So, but what enforcement capable... You know, a lot of ifs in that. What enforcement capability do we have with those ifs? And let me get... Go ahead, if you want to answer that, go ahead.
I was going to say that if they're going to plan where they're putting the future development rights.
Yep.
That...
That covers it.
That handles it.
Okay. Well, it sure helps a lot, yeah.
Yep, they're saying the only one is lot three.
Lot three.
So that one's lot two, I believe. Yep.
Yeah.
So that one's not carrying any subdivision rights or anything in the future.
So it is what it is and it won't be changed.
Yep.
Well, it isn't my favorite wording because it says that lot three carries it. It doesn't say that one and two can't. Is that... Is by virtue of the fact that lot three carries it, does that...
Well, I think there's a line there that says no lot is permitted to have a single family dwelling.
What is that?
Right here.
Other than lot three.
Okay, then it covers, then I'm covered. Okay, all right. I'm good there.
No, 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 it's permitted to be used for agricultural purposes.
Right.
Which is what we want.
Okay. All right, go ahead, Dan.
I think that was the only one I wanted to bring up because the rest of them were just changing, you know, some verbiage on the setbacks. Yeah, called setbacks, the building restriction lines.
Okay.
Add the number. And we sent in the Form B, the information on August 20th, 2025.
Sent it into whom?
Doug Stanwell.
Okay.
I gotta hear it.
Okay.
Okay.
And we had different numbers showing on parent tract here compared to the drawing because we switched from five lots down to three. So it's still showing five there, three here, but fixed that.
Okay.
Added a site data table that shows, another one that adds, that shows the different lots and the size and what their future proposed use is.
When did you switch from five to three?
It was before we did the last... Because we originally had turned in a plan for comments that was... That had a 10-acre lot subdivided here. It created...
It was about a week before our last planning session.
Okay. I was trying to remember that because, okay, fair enough.
Yeah, through the comments, we couldn't do two flaglots and stuff. We had to do a bunch of switching around.
Yeah.
And then, yeah, that's it. That was the comments.
Last comment, I realize you're representing the property owner. Last comment on there, I think, is right... Is that the green note on the last page?
Oh, yes, I do.
Not the exact year, but if the property owner's not contacted the tax office to figure out what the potential rollback implications would be, I would highly encourage them to do so.
Okay.
You know, just before they go through an improved plan.
Yeah.
Make sure that, make sure they check, check it out. And the number doesn't come back as something that completely blows them.
Yeah, yeah. No, but definitely will. When we do talk to, when we talk to our clients and stuff, we let them know that like when you're switching, when you're doing something, it will, there's going to be a lot of fees with that, so.
Okay.
But we will definitely reach out to them and let them know they need to check into that so they're not surprised by that.
So these lots are being optioned off?
Yes. It's my understanding.
Before the subdivision has been accepted?
The signs are out there.
Yeah.
I don't know. Okay.
But I've been told, I questioned them. I've been told that you can sell, but you just can't settle.
Yes, yeah.
Okay.
Because I think they actually, they've done that with one other plan that we had that we did that they had their auction lined up and then there was a bunch of issues. And then it got pushed out to the plan. They went ahead and sold it and just didn't do none of the paperwork to it. It was all done. We, I don't know how their auction was.
Everybody knows that.
Well, that's a commercial risk. It's not a zoning risk.
Yeah.
Right.
Okay.
Okay. Scott, do you have any... Any reservation about moving ahead with that plan or...
No, all of my comments have been adequately satisfied.
So we would have no conditions as far as your concerns at this point?
Just approval of the sewer planning exemption, which we have a couple of copies of the sign.
Yeah, we have to sign that. Have to have a motion to do that.
To accept that, yeah. But you don't have any reservations on that, right?
No.
You don't have the 18 by 24 copies, size copies along with the due?
I do not, no.
Well, we can... Yeah. No. At some point, you'll have to have them to, I guess, to record.
Okay, so that, we need to get you guys 18 by 24s to sign?
Yeah, if we go, if we take our action here before you can get the... Take it to the county to record, you got to have that.
Okay.
But is there any questions by anybody?
I've asked mine three.
Okay, first off, I'll entertain a motion for us to take action, assign the plan. Was it a Form... Is it a Form B or whatever they call it? DEP Planning Waiver Non-Building Declaration.
I'll make that motion.
Motion made by Tom. Is there a second to that?
Oh, second.
Second by Joe.
Okay, hold on a second. Okay, planning waiver, what?
Planning waiver and non-building declaration.
Okay. Okay.
Motion's been made and seconded. Is there any questions? All who's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say move. Get clear of that. And then the next item is the...
I have a question to put you to. How does the sunshine act violation, because the agenda was not posted on the website? How does that affect your vote? Since Steve Publix has not made aware of this on the website, which is...
Good question. Good question. I don't know.
Because if you remember, that gentleman came from Tyrone. And remember, he had a little sliver that was in our community in Huntington Township. And he wasn't on the agenda, so you couldn't even vote on that tiny sliver. So with the sunshine act violation, and I appreciate the fact that Mr. Longstreth brought that up because I was going to. Because this is the second time this has happened this month. So I don't know how that affects...
Can I make a comment on this? I did not discuss this with the solicitor. I've been involved in situations where that's considered to be a de minimis issue. And the... I'm not saying this one is, but I've been involved in situations where this was de minimis when it was otherwise represented to the public in other ways. So we can ask the solicitor, worst case scenario, we'd have to have him come back in again and reapprove. But my view, and I'm speaking not here, the chair, this one person with experience at this, is we move forward with this and if it's determined by the solicitor not to be de minimis, we'll come back and revisit it.
Okay, thank you.
So, does anybody have any questions about that?
No.
Think we'll take Tom's advice on that and, yeah, we'll go ahead and take action. If the solicitor says it's not, we'll just have to come back and do it.
And do it again. We can also call a special meeting so we don't inconvenience you anymore than we would otherwise would. We don't have to, but that's the kind of thing that I would support. Let me say it that way.
Okay.
Okay?
I'm trying to... We had a motion? We need a motion to approve this plan? There's no... There's no conditions?
There's no... I'm down to no conditions. Yeah. So I'll make that motion as well to...
To recommend to the board of supervisors?
Yes.
Yes. Is there a second to that?
I'll second it.
Second by Maron.
Who was the second?
Maron.
Maron.
Okay.
All who's in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, say move. We want to... We gotta go to the supervisor's thing. Maybe we'll have that decision. I was going to say we want to hold signing plans until...
Yeah, it's not going to do them to sign these ones because the courthouse will not take them.
Yeah, so I gotta bring them... We gotta get you 18 by 24s.
Right.
And then, is that something that Santa's secretary can drop off somewhere this week? The holidays, maybe probably next week, but that you guys can get and then...
Yeah, just drop them off here.
Okay.
It's usually not somebody here Fridays.
Okay, she don't work Fridays. She don't work Tuesdays, do Thursdays, so.
Mondays, okay. Right?
Yeah.
So pending...
Do you want us to call in first and make the appointments?
Yeah, we will. We will. We will. It's about an hour and a half drive, so we'll do that.
Oh, yeah. You definitely want somebody to call.
So, is that all?
Pending any hiccups from the solicitor, we'll sign these.
Yep.
We can sign the plans, but the main ones to sign is those 18 by 24s.
Okay.
Yeah.
We'll get them dropped off to you, like I said, either this week or next week. Probably, I said, probably might be getting next week with the holidays coming up here.
That waiver, we need that's... We could sign that tonight. That's... And then, yeah. I think it only requires... Yeah, I'll sign that here. Bear with me.
Okay.
Three copies. Did you say you got this into SEO?
What's that?
Did you get a copy into the SEO?
I don't know if they did it.
Okay, well, you don't need to go there for his signature.
I think that's only required if there's an existing system on the property, but there's no existing system.
There's nothing there.
So it's, it doesn't matter whether he signs it or not. Because that's the whole point of him deciding to inspect the existing system that's on the property. Be sure that it's functioning properly.
Very much. All right, so we'll get 18 by 24s dropped off to you guys and then... Do I give you guys a check or anything tonight? Is it the supervisor's meeting?
We'll take it.
A check, you mean fees?
Yeah, like fees.
Yeah, that does...
We'll get, before we release the plans to be recorded, we'll get you a final call on that.
Okay, all right, that works. Appreciate that.
Okay, thank you.
All right. See that? Yes, it's Andy's.
Andy's show.
Andy's turn. That's old business. Thanks, Andy, for these copies of the land use. Something that was... Is your possibility you could get us like a map showing what the existing zoning use is around the perimeter? Oh, it's got to be up here? No, you're on top of it. All right.
So this is... This is something that we have internal G I S system. It's basically the same situation, but I can turn things on and off. So we have in front of you are two maps. One's existing land use and the other is agricultural. So a little bit of how we do this. We start with the... With the assessment of every property. There's a code that goes with it that's based on the assessment and use of it, basically. It's not perfect, but it's a really good starting point for a lot of it. There's, I mean, the list of categories is, pages long. So it's not quite as simple. Like you'll see on there, there's categories that talk about greater than certain acreage, that sort of thing. Like in vacant, under 10, there's like three or four different categories of vacant.
Whose categories are these?
It's the assessment.
Okay, okay.
So this is all from Union County.
All right.
That's where we set this.
All right.
Then the person that does this, they go through and sort of spot check a lot of what's there based on the other part of it, the internal records that we have, have access to. But that's not as good as having locals double check what's up, what we're talking about and what it looks like and making sure that it's accurate. So that's partially where you guys come in on that. You can see up in the, on your map, it's in the top corner. You can see up in the, on your map, up in the top corner, there's a table there that shows, um, the acreage, the percent, and the count, the count is the number of parcels, um, there, I mean, that's all the category. As you can tell by the map, uh, pushing eighty-four percent agricultural open space, five percent rural residential, which is your three to ten acre residential lots, institutional, which is, which is, um, four percent, which is the, mostly, mostly the... There we go. The school, uh, state game lands, and this thing, which is apparently owned by a church of some, some sort.
Which thing? I didn't see where you were. Still can't. There, done.
Thank you, is she out around here?
No, he's just about to sleep.
Oh, okay.
That's that's Upper Bermudian Lutheran. It must be on the ground.
Is that what he's pointing to? Okay, gotcha, okay.
This little, this thing, this thing up here, which is, again, it's owned by a church.
Set up Upper Bermudian Lutheran.
Yeah, oh, okay.
Sound, it sounds about, sounds about right.
Okay.
And there's, there's a couple more, there's a couple, all the churches are, can't get classified as institutional.
And what's, what's the mixed use? I didn't even know we had a mixed use. You've got those two, I don't know what color they are.
Mixed use...
You've got, we've got two of them that, I don't know what color they are, rose or mauve or something. Pink, I'll take that.
So, it's, it's interesting, because this, this one right here is mixed, is mixed use, if I...
Yeah, it's games.
That's a fair-sized piece of property.
It's, it's, it's mixed use because there is, is the
Oh, car lot, front.
Up at the front, and in the back, so it's, it's, things where they're, where it's listed, again, it gets down to categories that it, that it is...
Okay, but there's a line there, one, one part of it's something, one part of it's something else.
Right.
Like the, uh, like the Miller property used to be, uh, or another, there's other. Aren't there other properties on, on White Church Road that are mixed use? Because we've got the, we've got commercial along the, along the road, and then, um, agricultural, once you get down the hill. Why isn't that showing up as mixed use?
Again,
I can't even tell.
It, so, this one over, this one over here is...
What road is that on, you?
That's Greenboro.
There's...
Oh, okay.
Oh, that's rubble.
Is that rebel?
Rubble, okay.
Okay, alright.
Andy's got a form there.
Okay. Alright, so...
I get it, that's two, two things on the same block.
Yeah, but why isn't that, why don't we have that on White Church? Because there's, there's parts of White Church that, where it's one parcel that has part commercial and part agriculture.
There is one of White Church.
There is, there is one.
I don't know if it's what you're talking about, Tom.
Yeah.
There's one pink one in there.
It's right next to the red.
It's a little sliver.
Yeah.
Okay, it should, it should be more than one. I know the, the Miller's property was one, not the, not the current property, but the, was gonna be a, um... Okay, maybe we're only down to a couple there.
It's only, there's only, it only says there's eight, eight in the town, but Thomas, it's where, it's where there's multiple, yes. Two things on it.
Yeah, two things on the parcel, I, I get it, and one's...
Your property was all changed to commercial.
No, I know, Paul, but that, but that was, they weren't alone on that. I mean, that, that whole slice.
Okay.
Yeah, was commercial along, that's why it was challenging for you and all of us to deal with, because we had, that was sliced commercial, and, and hardly anybody's property was all commercial. It was split between commercial along the road, and then agricultural off the road. And then, when something like, uh, the sports complex comes along, then it's, what do we do now? Do we, do we give them a permitted use, and something wouldn't have a permitted use? Or do we rezone part of it, uh, away from agricultural, which probably wasn't the right call in retrospect, but, but it, it, it creates this challenge. These mixed-use things are not, are not good outcomes, that's, that's why I bring it up. But, it's not our topic, uh, so it's, it's something for us to evaluate as we go forward.
So, the purpose of, of showing the existing land use is not to get down into this specific, each specific
Yeah.
property, is to make, make sure that we're, we're gen, not missing any, anything big.
Got it.
But, it's also to, to show that, um, you know, that there, there's a couple, you have, there's clusters of rural residential.
It's...
In here, there's, up here by the state, by the county line.
No.
We have little clusters filled in, in a number of different, different locations, where the, what you're looking for are combinations of uses and lot patterns that are substantially different from the surroundings.
Yeah.
You know, right, right now, if, if I go over here and put on this layer, now, now you can see in, in the blue, blue in the labels, where the existing zoning outline is. You know, right now, you have like this, this area here, and here, and here, that are all locked in the ag, the ag districts. Probably generally, generally
The storage.
Fits, for the most part. But, it's not necessarily, there's enough of a cluster there, that it's not necessarily an ag setting. It's a rural, I wouldn't say crossroads, rural crossroads type of, type setting.
Yeah.
You know, so may, may, maybe it is, it's, it needs to be its own, its own little district.
Yeah.
You know, you have, over, over here where ninety-four is, you have the schools.
Yeah.
You have, you know, a couple little pieces of things there.
Yeah.
But, you know, we took, there's four of the schools in the ag district.
Yeah.
Is that really the best thing? Maybe, maybe not.
Yeah.
You know, but it, what's, what's around it shapes why it's there.
Yeah.
Because it's not, the, the, it sort of sticks out from the rest of the setting, that there's not enough of non-residential stuff there to by itself justify the district. You know, then you go up here, the tiny little commercial, the actual, where you have actual existing industrial use up, up there, where the
Nell's Foods.
Now, so it exists. And you have, you have scattered residential all around. Now, if you zoom, zoom in here, and you see there's two, what are listed as two, um, commercial properties right here, um, but that looks like one of those, well, there's actually nothing on those properties.
Okay.
Use, there is commercial use, but it's, it's here, the property is, is in the borough, it just, the rest of it extends into the township. What's on your side of it is actually nothing. All the buildings and all the use is in York Springs Borough, for example. You know, and here you have
Vipers.
You know, a whole lot, car property, when the use is just clustered in one little corner of it.
The industrial, again, sorry to take you back, is that Nell's? Is that, is that our only industrial?
Use.
Is forty acres? Okay.
Now, it's, it's, if you zoom in on it, it's actually a, a bunch of properties.
Oh, okay.
It's not, it's, it's not all on one D.
Yeah.
Oh. Okay.
And you have a couple of, you have spot, you have, unlike a lot, so unlike a lot of municipalities that, that went without zoning for a long time, there, there's not a lot of, of existing uses that really stick out, that, you know, why, why is that there? And the answer is usually, well, because didn't have zoning.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
There's not a ton of that, I mean, the, the closer you're gonna get is, is here along Old Harrisburg Road.
Yeah.
You know, but otherwise, no. You know, you can zoom, zoom in here, and you can, you know, here's what it looks like right around, right around the interchange. That's kind of, that's the first part of it. This part that I, that I have put in, so this was compiled by, by my, uh, real resource division. But, there's, uh, for those of you who might know Mark Clowney in my office, who probably knows ninety-nine percent farmers in the, in the county, put, put this together for me, and it is generally pretty, pretty accurate. Like, why I put this together was because eighty, you know, eighty-four percent of the township is, is just used to agriculture, that's a lot, that's a lot. You know, your zone, your existing zoning ordinance is eighty-eight pers, is eighty-eight percent in the ag conservation district. So, part of that is, you wanted to look at, is there what type of ag operations are there, and is there a cluster? You can kind of really, really see where you have this purplish color, where all the orchards are, and, and as we talked last month about how, how you have to sort of start that transition from the fruit belt.
Yep.
Into the crops and animal, animal husbandry part, and you can kind of really see that line there.
Yeah.
With, with one, uh, dairy operation there, and then one sheep operation, poultry operation.
What was the blue one? Did you? Oh, yeah, I remember, yep, okay.
So, just pull to the orange and poultry. It lists as, as beef crop, dairy crop, poultry crop, because as, as Mark told me, most, most operations that have animals also have crops on them.
Yeah.
So, that's why, why they're listed there.
Yeah.
Equestrian, we actually, we actually did a economic analysis of the equestrian industry in the county, so many years ago. Where they sort of had, or catalogued a bunch of this, even going through it on specific, specific, it's how they found more there. So, that you can see, see those. The idea was to identify where
Okay, I guess we did it.
from, from a land use perspective, where you have certain types of agriculture. Because cert, you know, agriculture and acre law treats everything the same, but when it comes to operation, there's a big difference between a orchard and poultry operation, a orchard and a dairy operation. And, and sometimes those uses might, may or may not be compatible with each other. You know, how we've heard, heard, when we did economic analysis of the fruit belt, you know, we heard from, from the fruit industry that was, you know, were conflicts when they're, they're even amongst the, the industry, conflicts at their, their border, their forty properties was an issue with one person was spraying and another wasn't.
Yeah.
Or if they were, had different types of crop management techniques.
Yeah.
That, because the, the, certain things don't stop at the property.
Doesn't stop at the border, yeah.
So, being able to ma, manage that is there, if you, and, you know, so that, that's why, why we wanted to identify this. Unfortunately, but acre law, you can't do a zoning ordinance that would say, hey, this area up here is our fruit area, this area down here is our animal husbandry area, where it makes sense to cl, to, to cluster things, because you're, you're keeping like, like types of operations with like types of operations.
Yeah.
Unfortunately, we can't, we can't do that, but it's interesting to, to show that there, you have a big ag district.
Yeah.
And, yes, it, there are, it's generally covering the areas that it needs to cover.
Yeah.
And that it is, you know, there is, there's like this big area in here, that's state game lands.
Yeah.
You know, that's, it looks like a big, why is that an ag district, but it's, you know,
Yeah.
it's open that type of thing, so. And you can see it, there's, there's, on the agricultural map, forty-six percent crop, and that's like crop only. Thirty-four percent orchard, ten percent beef, five percent horses, three percent poultry, dairy, and sheep.
Well, how does it, how does it account for crop only? Like, you, you know, you made the point, it, something can be mixed. Does, does this map, like if, if there's a property that's, I'll pick some, you know, fifty percent orchard, fifty percent crop, is it, um, is that fifty percent split here, or is it predominant? Like, if it's predominantly orchard, it falls under orchard?
I think that, I think it's just what, what the predominant part is there. It's, it's whole properties, I don't, I don't think he's been splitting
Okay.
acre-wise.
Okay.
It was, it's, again, the idea here is to, A, make sure we're not missing anything
Yeah.
that, that badly sticks out. Is to give you an idea of what the, what, you know, the mix of things in your township actually looks like.
Yeah.
Part of this is, is the way that we look at, at zoning and planning, is you have to understand how you got to what you have now, before you can decide where you want to go. You know, if you don't understand how, or know how we got to this, and you say, well, let's build off of that, you might be perpetuating a, a, a not great thing. I'll give, and I'll give you a, for instance, here. So, here's, here's your, with all the, the land use and everything off, I'll, I'll put it on. So, here you can see existing land use with the zoning outline. Zoom in here, where you can see where your residential suburban district is, and your residential agricultural district. Alright, and by, by the way, so, the map here, eighty-seven, eighty-eight percent of the township is in the AC district, six percent is in the commercial industrial district, four percent is in the residential agriculture, and two percent is in the residential suburban. I don't know if that adds up to a hundred, because I was rounding, I had to read the decimals.
Okay.
But, or put, put it differently, eighty-eight percent ag, six percent commercial, five, uh, call it six percent residential there. But, if I'm looking at, at, from a land use perspective, where a lot of that is, it doesn't necessarily match up. And then, when you, when you take off land use and throw on this one, this one, which is, now again, the, this estate is, is at least a decade old, and I've, I've asked, I reached out to the, to the borough authority to see if they had updated stuff that we could use. But, the sewer and water services are basically, are basically the same. You can, you can see that not even, the service, not only does the land use not match into there, but the utility areas don't match there as well, and in, in fact, the well is out here somewhere.
Yeah, supply, supply well back, it's back over there.
York Springs Supply Well.
Yeah.
They also get a lot of water from a spring
Way, way to road.
Yeah, right here. So, they, the, the one of the, the main well locations for the, for the authority is in, in the residential areas, which you know, I, it, if I go back, then this work was originated in, in the late nineties? Yeah, I mean, that makes, would make some sense to build, build it this way, because you're, you know, you have your, your growth, your higher-density residential districts up against the bar.
And that was, that was original intent, I was on that
Right.
original. And we wanted to keep any heavy growth in near the water and sewer, instead of letting it spread all over the farmland and out, out through.
Right, and, and that, that's, makes sense, but it, looking at it with newer and, and modern technology here, it, the utilities and the growth hasn't gone that way. It's, it's kind of, it's gone this way.
Yeah.
It's gone south. You know, along Old Harrisburg Road, and, you know, potentially over, you know, over further on, on the South Ridge Road. You know, so, you know, that's why I, why I talked about understanding the broad, the conditions in there. You know, there's not, there doesn't, not necessarily something over here that would really say, well, let's, let's push it over, over there. that would really say, well, let's push it over there, you know?
You're talking about the water supply though, Andy? Because that's on top of a hill. So they got, they put it there so they didn't have to use pumps to get water into town. So they're using the elevation for that.
Right, but, correct, from an operational perspective. But last thing I think you generally want to do is pack development around the well source. Because you want that to be generally free so that it's not dumping things into it and having runoff into it. That's why pushing it out, it ended up going a different direction. The other thing is, the roads that go in through the borough here aren't the types that are conducive to supporting the type of development that's over on Old Harrisburg Road. You know, it just seems like from a zoning perspective, there's a mismatch in having your, the growth districts push to the north along the borough as opposed to down towards the interchange in that area. And that's, as I'm looking, that's what I see. I see a public well source here that you would generally want to keep free and open space area. I see the...
And some of these wells have like a wellhead protections out too.
Which makes sense, yeah.
I see, I see the authority system over here. I see the service area going this way. I see a lot of discussions happening on the properties around the interchange and along South Ridge Road. And you know what? Let's build this way, need to go this way.
I didn't see that last pointer. Needs to go what way?
Over here where the, where, what the map, what the existing land use shows me is that Old Harrisburg Road, fifteen corridor is where the focus of things should be. Now, yes, you have this little, this area up here. Upper along thirty-four and there, which is a secondary one just based on the village and things like that.
But I'm going back to your, you made a point and I didn't see where your pointer was. You said, it's coming here and it should, you should be, what are you, where's the should be part?
It's, right now it's shown on the north, like the north and west side of the borough. And where it probably should be focused is over the interchange south.
Okay.
And most, one, because of the well here, from an operational perspective for the borough. And the authority is you want to keep that protection zone around the well.
That's not the well.
No, that isn't. The well is down behind the fairhouse.
One well's at the old premium where the burrow goes. And the other one's, and that one's in line with our township, but one down at Sunnis. And the ones in the burrow, that should be the spring area.
But that isn't the right location for the spring. No, the spring is right up off of White Oak Tree Road on St. Clair's property. No, that's not, that's not, that might be the location of the reservoir, tank. But that's not where it gets its water. Because the spring water runs gravity from the spring about three miles to get to the tank. Because it goes across a couple of fields that I farm, goes along the Idiville Road.
Jim's where it goes along the woods.
Goes up over the hill behind Jody Dissinger's. Goes around behind the...
Because it used to be down at the Idiville Road.
But it still is, part of it. Yep, it goes up over the hill, behind the quarry, down along the Idiville Road, and then back across Oak Hill Road, right beside Old Shorty Cronister's house. Because there was a vent there in the field, at the edge of our field. They've never opened it, but...
Okay.
The other thing that we talked about, development down ninety-four, that there's not site distance south of York Springs going down ninety-four.
Say that again, Paul?
There's no site distance there to have development there.
Yeah, we were approached back.
Go in South Thirty-four.
Well, we were approached, remember back, probably ten, fifteen years ago, I guess it was. Well, no, somebody wanted to, what's down below there, it used to be Davis Farm down in there. And they wanted to put, they were even talking about maybe a Walmart or something going in there at one time. Township didn't, I'm speaking, from memory.
Where are you talking about though? Because I don't know what you're saying.
South of Gun Club Road, down toward the school.
Oh, okay.
Those farm fields in there.
Down towards where Rutter's?
They were, there was intention at one time to put a Walmart.
In our township?
Yeah. And that was probably, oh, ten, at least ten years, maybe fifteen.
That's an interesting, that's an interesting location.
Whenever, whenever that farm went up for sale, whenever the Davis Farm went for sale.
On the west side, the west side of ninety-four?
Yeah, and it was purchased by, or at least had a contract on it by a developer. He was intending to extend water up from Hampton the whole way up and also hook up with the sewer.
Is there sewage in Hampton? Is there sewer in Hampton?
There's sewer in Hampton and water. But they...
Sewer's up to Rutter's.
Yeah, but that, the problem was that the, with, like you were saying, at the site distance out there, that was going to be a terrible situation out there.
Is there still talk about the water to the school from Hampton, or?
Hasn't been anything to my knowledge for years.
We took care of it, the school took care of the treatment there, didn't they? That was a big issue with the treatment that needed to be done to the water.
I think that developer was offering money to the school if they hooked up. And they thought that was a good thing there for a little bit.
You'd have to be foolish to enter into, have any, to pay your water bill. When we have two.
So Andy, you're saying it's, where growth is more like to the south of, looks like.
Yeah, I mean...
The reason that was, a lot of that area up in there is almost like gravity flow into the, I think it was, was that gravity flow into the borough sewer system and stuff like that. And it was easier to service, but obviously it didn't, at the time, amount of time it's been in existence, it hasn't developed.
It's, again, all I have to go by is what we've seen in other settings where development has occurred. Not saying what actually happened here, but, you know. I mean, Idiville, York Springs has, you know, yes, we know that there was a project off of that road in the first place that has not, since gone away. You know, but that's sort of the exception. And while you saw the challenge that that project had in moving forward. You know, I see that, you know, trolley and some of the areas, area in here, you know, that's, that's not a, really a traditionally developable area today. You know, and your residential ag district, it's very low key, you know, residential district. It's going to get, not going to get you the type of development in that setting that would fit.
It would take, to develop any more in our township, it's got to take major influx of capital into the borough system. It's, it's not, it's at capacity from what I understand.
Or close.
Or close, or close.
Yeah, I guess a couple just thoughts here. And I'm not sure where we're supposed to go with this conversation, but there certainly is significant commercial development around us. And I think we can even make an argument, why don't we hold on agricultural and let others do the commercial around us? And just make sure that it's, what they're doing isn't making our township less attractive in doing so. Because there's plenty.
I concur totally with that.
Well, I, okay, so that was a question. Jeff answered, I didn't, I was more rhetorical at the time.
I get that, but what scares me more than anything is these AI and...
Yeah, so I was, I was going there, so...
And warehouse centers. And to think that we're completely immune is not right at all.
Look, there's, some of the companies I work with do some of these financings. And there's a trillion and a half dollars of AI development looking for a home. And they're going to find them. And part of it's Pennsylvania. We're not number one for a variety of reasons, but we're in the top six. So the, we do have to be aware to your, exactly to your point. And I'm not just talking about AI, I'm also talking about warehousing. You know, you look at the Trammell Crowe Warehouse at fifteen and seventy-four. You want to open your eyes. Go see that. Yeah, there's, it's like, there's no town left, it became a warehouse. Yeah. And that isn't even, that isn't even one company. That, Trammell Crowe has it, and they're going to lease out parts of it to whoever. Walmart, Target, whoever, come on in, sign up. And so when you have one real estate developer that can put that kind of money in, that money is flowing everywhere. And like I said, it's a, it's a trillion dollar issue. These used to be billion dollar issues. It's not anymore. So back to my, my question is, do we, what do we, where do we want to be in this? Because there's certainly plenty of development around us, and I think there'll be more. Tyrone seems to have an appetite for us. Historically, they have, and you may want to address that. I'll finish in a minute. And, and as I, as we've talked about, I mean, these, I, 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 there is aggressive offers coming in for some property we own in Tyrone that I can't explain. So that's when you start to get, you know that, you know the money's flowing. And, and I, so part of this is, what do we want to be in this situation? Do we want any more development? If we want it, or can we even control it if we don't want it? And how do we control it? Do we want, do we want to keep it in these corridors? Do we, do we want to make sure, even if we're not in control of the direct development, are we in control of the indirect impact of that development? Like with everything happening south on ninety-four, how much of an impact does that have? Now, I know we've talked before, we've talked to county about, well, that's going to, that, that development south on ninety-four, down into Hanover, Eisenhower Express, all that, that's going to have, that's going to, more of that's going to come off of thirty than is, is going to come off of fifteen, yeah. But not all of it. And, and we're, we're at a crossroads here with ninety-four and fifteen. And, yeah, so we have to, we have to be aware. Even if we say, we're done, no development, we'll sit back and relax, we can't sit back and relax. Because A, we're, we could still be target, I don't think we are right now. But that's not even the point. The point is, everybody else around us is a target. And we have to be smart about how we engage with what's happening around us, which is why Ted and I talked, and he asked you a question, Andy. Tell us what's going around us. Tell us what's happening on our borders. Because that right now is having more of an impact on us than what's happening inside our borders. So, sorry for the long diatribe, but that's kind of my thinking on that.
But we still have to prepare.
We have to. Regional zoning is so much important.
Yeah, it's an excellent, that's an excellent point.
Prepare for that eventuality.
Yeah, well, yeah, it's here.
This road down here is not going away.
The what?
This road down here is not going away.
Which, what do you, yeah, no.
Carrying everything to, up on the wind here.
Well, between fifteen and ninety-four, I mean...
Had to come all fifteen and then head in ninety-four.
Even the, I've only lived here for nine years. I go up and, I go up and back and forth to the War College a lot. Sometimes three, four, or five times a week. The ninety, the traffic on ninety-four has changed so dramatically. And it's, yeah, you live there. It's, yeah, I know.
Last ten to fifteen years, it was crazy.
And it's so many trucks. You know, I have to leave an extra twenty minutes to get behind trucks. And, and it's, it was always a truck corridor. It's way more so now.
All the snack food is being produced in Hanover and distributed out of Carlisle.
Yes, and I'm all for snack food. The record reflects.
Well, they're running out of Schweppes. Now, this don't affect them, but they're running out of Schweppes around thirty-four. And they're turning going up Pine Grove Route. And going up two thirty-three to hit them warehouses up at eighty-one and two thirty-three.
Yes, yes.
And that used to be no trucks.
Yeah.
Now...
And I work with some of the legislators up in Cumberland. And there's actually Pepsi pulled out of a warehouse because the traffic was so bad. That, what's that tell you? I mean, holy cow, Pepsi can't handle the traffic.
You ask the people up in upper Franklin County, they're, they regret they ever even went down that road.
Yeah, yeah.
And it's too, once you open the door, you can't close it again.
And we can't, and, and, and I want to say but, and we can't put our head in the sand because it's happening all around us. So you were, you were about to say something.
So, yeah, one, the whole purpose of this is to, this is the first step in a lot of what you're talking about. First step is, are you comfortable that what we're showing on the existing land use map here is accurate? There, is there's anything glaring that we missed? That says, you know, this, this use sticks out, it's, you know, it's classified, that's what?
Not that I can see.
That's, that's the first step. The next step, once that, that's done, if you're comfortable with this, the next step is, I go back and I start drawing lines on the map identifying, what do you call it, or character areas? These are areas that I've sort of hinted at, like this area right here. You know, or, you know, these areas here, or that sort of thing, where you have a cluster of existing uses that are similar. And then from there, you start to build, start to build what zoning districts you're using and what, and from that, that sort of thing. And that's, you start to riddle down to a map that you're comfortable with. And again, posing that here, here because, again, that map was developed in a different timeline, planning wise and development wise in the county. Just because it's like that now doesn't mean that that's the bit, the direction you should build off of there. It's important to discuss that within context of what's happening in your neighbors. So here's, here is the two thirty, fifteen, two thirty-four interchange. You know, this, you know, the service area for Tyrone Township.
And is there a central water solution in that, in that area? You've got the trailer court that's on a sewer. You've got Rutter's, you've got, educate us about what all goes on there that maybe even makes sense for us to consider.
So the, so the, it's shown here, the line actually goes out to serve Rutter's. So fifteen and two thirty-four is unique in that it's one of the few interchanges of fifteen that actually has public utilities at, or nearby. Obviously ninety-four does, even if it's not extended, if it's going the other way. Same thing, same thing in two thirty-four, it's there, it's going the other way. Thirty has it, obviously. Ninety-seven has, has it in pieces. After that, that's it. Not even, well, I guess technically you could say that three ninety-four does. But it's unlike those, the other ones I mentioned, where it physically touches the interchange. That is off. It's skipped over, over to Amblebrook. It doesn't actually go to the interchange, it doesn't cross over the other side, the interchange with actual space to develop this. You know, so that's why they're, you know, if, if you're looking at the utility perspective, the, these northern interchanges here, that's why they would be looking at those sort of things. Because the utility's there and it's not super difficult to get across from one side to the other. It's not like they have to run it from a private development. It's not like they have to run it from a private development over. It's not like they have to run it from who, who the heck knows where.
Yeah.
Because there's nothing there.
Yeah.
That's why those two interchange are, are looked at potentially, that may be why you're seeing thing, things there.
Yeah, they attract them, yeah.
You know, fifteen and ninety, ninety-four, you know, you're, you're within a great, a decent travel distance of a lot of urban settings, which is why that, that, that attracts. If that, if that had the topography that two thirty-four had, we'd be having a different conversation.
Yep.
Um, and you'd have a lot more visitors to, to your township.
Yep.
So, you know, I, I work with Mies Spies down here. Um, it stops here. This, this is up, up, once you cross two thirty-four up here, that's, that's in essentially their equivalent of your ag district. There's zero interest in changing that.
Zero interest from the township. Okay. I just wanna make clear, 'cause it's probably not zero interest from a developer.
It's not that far.
There's. So here, you can kinda, kinda see here that, you know, these are, these are the, these are the preserved lands in here. So, you, you have the, this, the light green is land conservancy, the dark green is.
That, that makes a difference. Yeah, that makes a difference.
Are, are there? Yeah, there, there.
Yeah, there's some.
There are properties there.
Yeah.
In fact, I think this might be Ross maybe over here. Um, but anyway.
But it's all conservancy.
It's, it's.
That is, that is.
But it's, it's still, development's not happening.
Yeah.
So, they, they've come to a clue that this, it's.
Is that all redding there?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah. Um, it's not happening. Their growth area is, is here.
Yeah. Yeah.
Um, they actually have the opposite problem. They don't, not really have a good area to put their commercial district there.
They almost have to invent one.
Right.
Which they could.
And they, which they don't come to.
Yeah.
You know, they have one that's very, it's very small, it's very tight.
Yeah.
Sitting around the crossroads here.
They can flatten a piece. Sorry.
Or mean it's pretty, flatten it.
Yeah, yeah.
So they have, they have a different, different set, which in theory is, is kinda why things could jump up here.
Yes.
Um, the flip side is, is the utilities end, end here.
There's water and sewer.
You know, and, and once you, they're, you, it's, it's down here.
Yeah.
So it's not exactly easy to extend the, like, like the development that's, residential development's over here, south, south of.
Yeah, and those were challenging to begin with.
I mean, we, we, I, I, we, we tried to talk that, we were actually going through rezoning down there. We tried to talk the developer out of it. We're like, we'll zone this commercial and make, and make it easier for you.
Yeah.
Because do you, do you really want to, want to blast as much as you're gonna have to to run your utility lines through Ironstone?
Yeah.
Do you understand what that means?
Yeah.
And he, he did not understand and did not want to change it.
But he thought he did, but he thought he did, yeah.
You know, to the point where, where they, they actually cracked the foundation of, they, they got, he got dragged before the township several times.
Yeah, he was cra, cracking foundations across the road. Yeah, not even in the neighborhood. Yeah.
He was one of the committee commissioners.
Yeah. I didn't know that. Yeah, that's not, that won't, that won't go well.
The other thing I took in mind is geology plays a significant role on, on, on here. There's a reason why it, it hasn't jumped up. You know, the only reason why you, water, water would come up this far would be to go to the school. If, if, if for whatever reason the school wouldn't, wouldn't need it, it's either coming up from York Water, who would, would probably gladly run, run it up there if, if, if there was no other choice. Or to run it down, run it down from York Springs. You know, I, I would, again, this is just me, me speaking from past experience. When York Water does that, they tend to be, be willing to put limitations on what they will serve. Like if they, they run it through an area like this, they will put, usually they've put restrictions in the past to say, you know, okay, we're not gonna serve, we're going up here for one thing, we're not going to serve, um, your development off of there.
We're not gonna serve your warehouse and Walmart. Yeah, okay.
They tend, they tend to respect local ordinances and planning, um, which is one of the reasons why we tend to, to be supportive of what they do. Because they, they have proven that they, they try to do that more so than some of the other, some of their competitors. But a, a, a long way of saying that there's preservation happening, happening down here. There's geology in place. There's not a lot in there that would drive utilities to go there. There's other settings around the area that are closer to the, to the infrastructure that would attract those things. Now, again, could that, could there be one offs? Absolutely.
Yeah.
Can't, can't say.
Especially with that kinda money in the world. Yeah.
Can't say absolutely no.
Yeah.
But everywhere we've seen it discussed for these big uses, it's going around major crossroads. It's going adjacent to utility infrastructure. You know, that's where, they're not looking to spend, they're looking to spend a lot of money, but it's on the stuff that they use, not the stuff that is public sector's responsibility in their minds.
Yep, exactly.
You know, so if it's not close to that sort of stuff, they're not doing it. And if they are willing to do it, then they're gonna be looking to somebody else to pay for it.
Yeah.
So that, I, I know that Tyrone is, is putting, they, one of the districts down here, they put, um, some of those uses that you mentioned, Jeff, in that district. But again, that's where context matters. If they don't put it there, then they're putting it up here. Up where, up where thirty-four comes through and where, where the industrial area is up there. If they're not, it's go, either going in there, the choice, it either goes there or it goes down here by the interchange. And they're like, well, you know what? That's an ag area up there. We'll, we'll make that fit what it is. But if it's gonna be here, we prefer it be, be down here because the impacts to the community, if it's a, a trucks, it's gonna be a lot easier to go right now. To fix an interchange, it is gonna be to fix whatever's going on, whatever the impacts are up there.
Yeah.
So that, that's why, why content, the context of it matters. Now, are they likely, yeah, something? I don't know. I mean, you never know what Hillendale will do. Everything's awful. Everything south of the interchange here is owned by Hillendale.
And, and the truck traffic there is tremendous now with ag com and rudders, and, uh, the chicken houses and dairy mills.
Absolutely. Yeah, yeah.
It's not just the eggs going in, it's the feed going in.
That's correct. And the grain going in.
Yeah.
And everything going on down to ag com.
Yeah.
Trying to get that off the road with the trucks.
Yeah.
Well, Andy, let me ask you, this is a loaded question. What would you recommend to our township to tighten things up so that we, are less likely to have these issues? I know it's a loaded one.
Yeah. The, so generally speaking, I, I think that there's not a lot of changes that you have, that you have to make. I think you need to, need to investigate what you wanna do in this setting up here, um, do you, there. I think you need to look at these areas in here and that are not agricultural and maybe, you know, do something for those that makes it maybe a little easier for those rural, rural settings to, you know, lot off a little bit as they might, as they might need for some of the bigger properties without going through the, the ag preservation side because the properties aren't big enough to, to fit, to fit that. You know, which really leaves you two, two settings to, to look at. One is your existing commercial district here and what the scope of that is. And two, what, what have, what, over here. Do you wanna keep it as it is? Do something, do something different with it? Is there enough there that you wanna, want to make it, to look there? Um, so that, that's, that's generally where it is now. What I, what I would, what I plan to do is go back and start drawing some of those lines and start identifying what, what the numbers are and what the acres are and what, most importantly, what's available within those settings.
Yeah.
We've talked about the existing land use, I've talked about the character areas and that sort of thing. Once you draw those lines, the, the next part is what's within those lines. What's, are, is there potentially available land, developing the land in there? How much of it is it? What could you see? That, that sort of thing. Cause you're, you're, you wanna make it, you want it to go where, where, if it's gonna happen, where you want it to happen. But the same thing, you also have to evaluate, was the, what, what sort of exposure are we creating for ourselves type of thing? You know, I could draw, draw a growth district that encompasses all this here and say, well, hey, that's gonna accommodate everything. Yeah, but at what cost? What's that opening, opening you up to in terms of, you know, how many, what, how much housing could go there? What type of agriculture talking that could be for these larger uses type of thing? That's the next step in do, in doing that.
I think if you ask most people who live in the township, mostly, I think everybody would like to keep it as close to, and I know that's impossible to what it is now. I, I don't think everybody's clamoring for development, either industrial or, um, private homes. I mean, there are some, but it's not, but I think most people like it that way. That's why we're here. But I know nothing ever stays the same. But we gotta prepare ourselves for the eventuality that eventually, I mean, if you look in the last twenty years, what's happened around us, and I mean from Gettysburg to Hanover to Carlisle and Diltsburg, I mean, it's, it's, it's pushing. And, and we're kinda right in the bull's eye. It, it's coming at us from all directions.
As I said, in case you're curious, this is what the preserved lands, so the map looks like in the town, in the township. Can I see a construction up here in, in the fruit belt area, down here, you know, the crop area, the animal, animal area type of thing. The other area that I think you have, that we have, have to talk about is this setting down here. You know, I, I think that, that, this is, this is your, a commercial dis, a commercial district down here is the one that, that, I don't know why there's weird, weird lines here. That's, that's a GIS thing. I, I, I don't know. But, you know, this area here, that's, that's part of your commercial district, same thing that's up here on Old Harrisburg Road, the interchange.
Yeah.
You know, this side maybe makes sense, you know, that I, correct me if I'm wrong, but I'm looking at Ted here. Wasn't, wasn't.
That's Keller's.
Wasn't there multiple proposals over the years for this?
Yeah, for swine operation. Tom Ross used to.
Yeah, was it, was there, I know the pig, the pig farm.
Yeah, that was Ross.
Weren't they talking about a, like a, wasn't?
Equestrian center.
Equestrian center, that's right.
Yeah, after, after the pig farm thing got squashed, not squashed, but when he gave up on that, then they were talking about a huge equestrian center. And I don't know who was.
Hotels, I think, too.
Pardon me?
I think it was hotels or lodging involved in that.
Oh, yeah, yeah, that was, that was the grand picture, but.
Remember, from there it went down to, to ninety-four before it went by.
Yeah.
I bring it up because I, is it, I, well, you know, that triggered a, a memory here. You know, this is the type of set, this is the type of property.
That's a large tract, that's a large tract.
It's flat, it's close enough to water and sewer. I mean, you know, only a stone's throw to rudders, well, back door.
Right, back doors, right. And it's great signage and anything else from fifteen.
Yeah, I mean, you're right next to there.
It's below fifteen, it's, you look right down into it.
I know.
How long has Keller had that property?
Oh, he's, um, Ed, I think it's a long time, yeah. I don't even know if it was, it might've been a family property.
I don't think so. I'm not sure either.
He's been there quite a long time though.
I wanna insinuate that it's something that we want, say, developed there.
Yeah, I know.
I'm raising it as a, to answer the question of where do we, what do we need to talk about? This is a setting that you need to talk about.
Right.
You know, I, I don't.
But, but in, in its own right, doesn't that encourage? When somebody knows that that is a prime property for, I mean, I'm, I'm one of those that, um, don't encourage it.
Well, they know it's a prime pro, just to be clear.
Oh, yeah.
They know it's, anybody that's looking at development in this area of Pennsylvania knows the prime pro, property. What, they'll start to poke around and say, which township or county might be a little more willing to cooperate with me?
Yep, I guess.
And where do I have to throw my money around? And, um, and when you look at, you know, up and down ninety-four again, up and down fifteen, up and down thirty-four, I, I, you know, the big advantage thirty-four has up in the area you were pointing in our northern corner, is that proximity to Carlisle. I mean, that's, that's.
That's not far.
No, 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 no.
Carlisle's not far at all.
Fourteen miles.
So, um, and the northern end is even closer, Roxy. So, it's a, um, that's, that's a really nice advantage in that area. Anyway, my, that wasn't my point. My point is, understanding what our risks are, understanding where we wanna be. And if we wanna be the agricultural oasis as development happens around us, that's a decision. And I would say we'll probably get our, my, my ear to the ground on our citizens, that is probably the vote you'd get. You'd also get a vote if, um, around, if we're gonna, if there's gonna be development, let's be part of it instead of, let, instead of it happening to us, let's happen with it and, and let's be part of the thinking. And so that's another, that's another element that we have to take into account. This, we're in the early stages. I mean, this, we're in the early innings of this, whether it's the energy part or whether it's the water part. And so we are in the early stages. But I'll tell ya, in my experience, the early innings are when decisions are made. And, and do you wanna be part of those decisions? Or do you wanna be standing on the sideline and watch them happen to you?
Uh, to echo what Tom said, I would put it this way. The timeframe for when, when, when a warehouse or a data center or whatever big use you wanna point to drops into public knowledge, the decision that authorized that was made years before.
It's too late.
The decision with, when those is made at meetings like this, discussions like this, years before it shows up.
Yep.
You know, but the time it shows up as a conditional use or whatever process it might, might be, it's too, it was, it's committed. It's too late.
It's wait.
Deciding where you, where you want them now. That's why, you know, you asked for what's, you know, again, this is a discussion point you would need to have. If you're, where you wanna, if you have to provide for those uses, where's the best place with the least impact? Two, you know, is it up here by the interchange where it's close to the, close to utilities, but the land base might not be ideal? Is it down here where the land, the land base is ideal, but the infrastructure might, might not? The land base might be an A and the infra, infrastructure might be a C. Here, infrastructure might be an A and the, and the land base might be an F.
Then that'd be where it needs to be.
You know, so that's, but yes, but it's.
Because it's detergent, there's gonna be more of a deterrent there.
That's, that's one way to look. Then you gotta be careful drawing that because then, you know.
That's what I was gonna say.
You know, you don't wanna be, there's being exclusionary by the exclusionary.
Yeah.
And then there's, um.
It's non-defensible.
Yeah, it's, I, the legal term I'm drawing blind on is basically you're being exclusionary by, by making it so difficult that it's.
It's improbable.
That's, yeah.
And the other, the last point I'll make, Ron, stand up for a half hour.
It can get shot down because it's.
Yeah, because, but the last point I was going to make, you can't think about this in old rules either when you say, well, that's too expensive. Throw a trillion and a half dollars at something and find out how fast it can get done and.
Like New York Springs Sewer and Water, if, if somebody wanted to move in there and has.
They just built new ones.
Has billions of dollars, they throw a couple hundred million, hey, we'll, we'll give you a whole new.
You, you, you got it.
A whole new system.
You know, who would have said, oh, we'll just start, we'll just, you don't have nuclear power? We'll just restart Three Mile Island, shut up, you know, it's like.
And then they give them a million dollars to, to start it.
Absolutely, yeah, and so you can't think in terms of the old rules. It's a new rule time because of the money and the technology.
Andy, not to change the subject, down at 30 and 94, the big warehouse that they've been, is it in Limbo? Huh? It's dead.
As far as I know, it's dead.
Okay, the township squashed it or what?
It, it got denied and I don't think, I don't think they appealed.
Okay.
It's the least, at least, when, in my dealings with the township down there, I go to their meetings regularly like, like here. It's, it has not come up since.
I know there was a lot of talk about it and, and then Penn Doc, they weren't happy about.
Ron, you, you wanted to say something.
There's, here's selling issues down there, is it zoned for it there?
Yeah.
Which is a different, different issue.
It's entirely different issue, yeah.
There, there's, there's a mirror of utilities and road infrastructure, whether, whether that township will agree with me or not, there's a marriage of, of the utility infrastructure and the road infrastructure there to do it. They're, they're having the discussion of where is it most appropriate to have those type of uses? In which corridor? Is it 15, is it 94 and 30? Is it 194? They have two in their, their corridor, which one, and they have different types of zoning on each corridor. You know, so one's more commercial, one's more industrial. So they have, have a discussion of which setting is, is more appropriate for various types of uses from solar, from utility solar to warehouses, data centers, all that sort of thing. So that's, you know, that's a level of discussion you guys don't ha, need to have at that depth because you don't have.
We don't have that.
We don't have choices.
Ron.
The, the ground that Ross had, is that from Ross, is it the whole way to Harrisburg? Is that the commercial area? I'm not, I wasn't paying attention back over the, over the years. Does that run the whole way from the ground that Ross had, the whole way through Ed Keller's? The whole way into the Tyrone line?
Ross don't own that anymore.
I know, I know, I'm just reading that as a reference.
Oh.
That's all commercial industrial.
It's CI.
From old 15 to new 15, the whole way in through.
The whole block, I think, CI.
Township line, yeah.
I didn't appreciate that.
Down there, Blue Smith Road around there.
Down, down here is 234.
Yeah, I didn't, I didn't know that.
Here's Oxford, Oxford Road.
Yeah.
I don't know why there's, why there's a small strip on the other side of old Harrisburg Road make like that. Because that's, that sets up.
So this is the property we were just talking about with the plant.
Yeah.
It, it goes right up, the chemistry is right up to the bottom.
But Keller's farm is, is commercial industrial?
Yeah, that sets it right in the middle of it, I think.
Part, part. Now, again, that, that, and this, this is another good, another good example of something that, that is a technique that was used when this was first developed and is not used anymore. We, this, this is the ad zoning.
I would agree.
Design 101, not split properties unless you absolutely have.
Yeah.
Oh, run and blow on property lines.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
Not arbitrarily grow a line.
And, and route and streets.
Right.
Yeah, I think you're right about that.
I could, I, again, I could see a situation where that, I get why this area down here would be. This, I don't see any, any reason why from a planning perspective you would extend that onto the others, to the west side of Old Harrisburg Road. It just doesn't, doesn't make, make a lot of sense. There's nothing over here that, that screams, this has to be commercial.
No.
So you might, if you wanted to keep this, for example, you might shift it and tighten it or do something else with it, target it to specific properties in, in that set, in that setting there. But, you know, that, that's just drawing, drawing straight lines because it was easy on, easy to make maps that way at the time.
Yeah. Yeah.
But in, in interest of, of time, so for what I, when you generally, what we, what you see here was generally accurate.
Yeah, I, I'd just like to see the same thing with, with the contiguous zoning.
Yeah, I, I can, I can, we have, we have all that, I can get that to the front of that. For the next, next step, I'll come back with those areas along with the numbers.
Okay, that'll be great.
Have, start having, have that discussion there, the shape. So what we talked about last month in terms of the ag district was not irrelevant. It was just maybe a little premature.
Yeah.
It's a good, because I, again, I don't see, it might come, it might not be 87% because I could see us taking some of those smaller areas out into a more rural oriented district. But it's not going to come down, I don't think it'll come down significantly. It's still, it's, you have that 83%.
Yep.
Of, you know, of the agriculture, I don't think it's going to, you have a little more now, 87%. You know, I, I can see it coming down somewhere in, in between there, maybe. But ag, the ag district is going, in any map, would likely form main component of your, of your, your map.
Yep.
You know, the, there's, the growth areas are going to be focused on other, other things. You know, and aside from the, the area up here.
Yeah.
You know, it's, the rest is going to be ag. So it's not, that was, was a, was a, they had to have that conversation just maybe a little early.
Yeah, I think it was helpful, but you're right, it was a little early. Okay. Thank you, Andy, very, very, very helpful.
Yeah, geology has a lot to do with that, like, like the orchards are. Paul couldn't raise fruit crops down in his ground and.
On the other hand, you drive through the orchard area in the last two years, there's a lot of corn and beans in the orchard area that never was there before.
Up there in Peters, they say they got hundreds of, yeah, a lot.
I mentioned that deep foot tree.
Yeah, they put on soybeans. To help the soil.
One a little bit, that. My misinterpret, changing one's operational thing in this property that they identified, that's what they posed as a big, you know, a challenge. Do you want to transition or change there? And, you know, what that means, their costs in terms of spraying and that fact.
Public comments?
Yeah, I got it.
Everything about, what is?
Yeah, cherry orchard, yeah.
In front of my hill, it's all worth it.
Thanks, Andy, for your presentation. Okay, next, I guess.
Um, next step, next step, I'm going to update some, make some new maps here.
Okay.
Um, I have some, I have some more copies, I'll throw it in the visual aid there and we'll keep having discussions. Ultimately, what I think we'll want to do is get to a new map first. And then we'll, then we'll go back and revisit this case.
Right, okay. We may, maybe even want a new district or something added, it's possible.
I, I could, I could see two, potentially two new districts. One specifically up around, up around the 34 setting and kind of the other one I've hinted at. But we'll, we'll see what the, what the, I'll go with this show. That's the, that's the, that's the next step. So it might be one, one more discussion, discussion next month and then a actual map following and.
Okay.
All right, thank you. Got public comments?
I have just two quick things. I do want to ask the engineer, what happened to that gentleman that came from Tyrone about his, the sliver of driveway? He's never come back.
Sliver, sliver of driveway?
Yeah, remember he wasn't on the agenda and he was very upset because he said, I was told to come to the planning commission.
We, we don't know.
So we don't know whether he went on without approval?
We can't, we know, I, I don't think he went on without approval, I wouldn't presuppose that. But he was clearly not communicating with his own engineer.
Sure.
I would suggest he had to resolve those challenges before he comes back here. So we, but we don't know, Mar.
And the second thing is, under a right to know request, I, and this was when Mr. Goyer was the open records officer, I requested examination of the Diller file. And we met here, Mr. Goyer and I met here, I reviewed the one file, which was just plans and I think a couple papers, it may have been from Mr. Diller's engineer. I wondered where, any kind of correspondence, where the planning commission got in, say, comments from Mr. Merkel or Mr. Longstrath. Before the special meeting for the budget, the secretary we were talking about, she got a little nasty, et cetera. She claimed she knows nothing about your emails, she doesn't have access to them. I mean, I told her, you all use your personal emails. And what's concerning is, there's no policy here in the township. And I understand, you know, it's a rural area, but there should, Mr. Longstrath, in fact, brought the file, I think, out at the last planning commission for me and said, I understand you won't see this. I said, I saw it with Mr. Goyer. He's, and I asked him about why there's no correspondence, et cetera. He said, we don't, he doesn't personally print anything out, so.
They were, they were on the zip drive, everything was there.
They were what?
It was on the zip drive. I copied my entire electronic folder and put it on the zip drive to put it with, with the plans and everything was there.
Okay, but let's get to your question.
But I wasn't, I wasn't shown, you said like a flash drive you had that?
Yeah.
Okay, I was not.
Hanging, hanging right on the edge of the envelope. It's been there ever since it came out the first time.
Do you see what I mean?
I, I'd just like you to get to your question, please, because I'd like to answer.
I wanted to know the records, why weren't those things printed out for me to review?
You didn't say you wanted them printed out, you just said you wanted access and an opportunity to review them.
To.
So I, I gave you everything.
So I have a request in again.
Okay.
And she's taken 30 days to get all that out for me, but I'm just wondering, like, I did not see any envelope with a drive in it, so. I just wanted to check because I want to know why you as the planning commission have to use your own email, private email addresses for township business.
Okay.
I mean, we had Roxy Sobel and Geis, I have the papers where they indicated for a previous right to know that they delete everything. That's, that's illegal to do for township records. And you should all have township emails. If somebody wants to contact you, Ted Decker as the chair, why does he, nobody knows what his private email address is. Not even the secretary, she admitted, I know nothing about their emails. So I think it's something that you should discuss.
Okay. Though, though, let me address it, may I?
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay, so, because I'm subject to many records with the SEC, with the Supreme Court and other things where I serve as an expert witness. So in a situation like this, where there, I have next to no emails. I, I get, I get emails with the agenda, I get emails with the, the schedule. And so I've never felt the need to have a township, no. If there were, if there were records, if I'm asked for a record and I have a record on my email, I would, I would respond to that. I just responded that I don't have any records with Diller, I've never had any. And you have to also understand, the planning commission is, it's highly unusual, the planning commission is going to have any direct interaction with a, with a township development or something else. That's brought us in front of a meeting and shown us, just like tonight, we look at the drawing and, and that's how we respond. I'd never respond by email to a drawing, first of all, it doesn't make engineering sense. Second of all, it doesn't make record sense. So I, that's highly unusual that we would have any interaction with some, I'm not saying absolutely impossible, I don't think I've ever had any in my, my nine years. So it's unusual for us, period. So I, I've never felt the need to go back and say, I want a township email for the three, three scheduling things I might get a year, there's no reason. I would, I do want to address one thing you said very specifically. If someone wants to contact me, now Julie's new, I hadn't even met Julie until today, I, I don't, I don't want to pick on Julie. But if, if someone went to Gus and said, I want to talk to Tom Strife, he would have made that possible. In fact, he did that once, I don't remember the context, it was years ago. Or, so people can contact us, they can come to a meeting, obviously, and, and contact us, but. So we're not operating in a level of sophistication that you might be used to where we would have our own township emails and we would have our own, within the township email box. I think, I just, I, if someone asked me that now, I'd say, this is just not necessary because we don't have that level of interaction because we're just getting schedules and agendas. So that's my best reaction to, to your question. We do need to respond to open records and, and we do, this isn't the first time we've been asked. We were asked in another circumstance a few years ago, to, to, if we had any contact with a particular developer to indicate accordingly. And we indicated accordingly. So I'm, my point is, I don't know that makes any sense for us to have a, be in the township email box. If someone, this, this supervisor's called, the supervisor said, you need a township email box, buddy, because those three emails you get every year, we, we want to make sure they're captured in the email box. Otherwise, you can just ask me, which you did, if that was your record, I don't even know who asked. If that was your request, then I respond, here's my, here's what I have. My, I don't have any in the Diller case, but I would have, I would have an agenda for the meeting.
Right.
Does that help you understand?
Actually.
No.
I really don't understand why you all can't have township emails.
We can't, we can't. We can't.
And why you don't have them because I know, I think it was at the last meeting, you asked Mr. Longstrath, can you resend that to me so it's at the top of my emails?
Yes.
Which indicates you have a lot of your personal stuff. I mean, like.
Wait, wait, let me, I, I'd like to understand what that means, I have a lot of my personal stuff. Is that a sentence or, or what do you mean by that?
Personal emails, it means that you're using your personal emails, your e, private email addresses for township business.
I wanted that in my private email, that's correct, because I wanted to see that drawing and that, that plan. But it's the same plan we all had out on the desk, there wasn't anything different than any of that.
But you had said, so it's at the top of my box because I think you.
I have thousands of emails.
No, and that's why, that's why I'm saying, why don't, why doesn't township provide you all with your, a township email?
They, they can if they want, I'd call it, I'd call it a resource unnecessary, that, that's how I'd come to that.
Because when I reviewed, it was 20, it was before they were going to destroy a certain period of right to know request. So I came in and I reviewed the big binders and that's where I found there was an extracurricular meeting at Paul Geis's office and, I'm sorry, in his house during COVID. And the problem was, Roxy Sobel had it sent to Jean Sobel, her emails, which, I mean, there's confidential things, et cetera.
Wait a minute.
Hold on, hold on, hold on.
I, we only have one email. And my husband has never, ever. And my husband has never, ever, ever looked at an email. He doesn't even know how to get into it. We don't have separate emails. We, I only send to these people the agenda and what Scott sends to me for the meetings. We don't have, we don't need township emails. And to begin with, that is not our decision. And if you feel that, you need to bring that up to the supervisors, not us. We are just an advisory board that's appointed. We can't make that decision. That is not our decision to make.
I understand that, but I'm saying about record.
Then stop, stop.
Roxy, Roxy, Roxy.
So, please.
Go ahead.
But this is what I mean. This township should have emails for anyone unemployed to make it easier on the secretary or the right-to-know, um, for officer.
That's what I just said. That is not our decision.
She, she knows that, Roxy. Okay.
Yeah.
All right.
Thank you for explaining it, but like I said, when I was given that file, I mean, I don't, I don't bring a computer in here to do a flash drive. That should've been provided by someone, by Mr. Boyer. And there was no flash drive in an envelope because I know what was in there.
Okay.
So, but I appreciate your explanation. Thank you.
You're welcome. Yes.
There are some municipalities, larger ones, where the elected officials have, have them. I deal with half a dozen municipalities. And almost universally, if the planning official members, even high development ones, its correspondence goes to their, their personal accounts, not, not the ones that have municipally provided ones are usually the elective, elected officials and staff that they have.
I don't have a county. I don't have a county email box.
In, in other municipalities, in other counties, is that different? Probably. Um, that's just been my experience in Adams County.
Yep.
Is that, is that it's common, that if it exists, it's at the elected, the elected officials' level and that, and that's generally where it's at. Yeah, I, even, I, even Kaysborough, I believe, where the planning commission actually approves plans, um, I don't think they have theirs, because I've never seen it from them. So. And it doesn't, it doesn't, it doesn't exist, but it's, it's less common in the county than it would be in, in other, other of our neighbors. Like, I could pick out some ones in Cumberland County where, where they, even the, um, boards underneath the planning commission have, have their own. But then again, they have thirty, forty thousand population too. So, um, and that's just, that's just the, our experience in other settings.
I guess I'm old school, but when I gotta do, when I gotta converse with people through email and not the phone or not paper copy, that's the day that I resign from this board and the township supervisors.
Yeah, I can't even email Jeff anything. I have to mail it.
Can I just make one point, though? I, I understand your point and I, and I take your point. But we still have a responsibility of record preservation. So if you create a record, whether, whether it's by email, text, whatever, we have a responsibility of record preservation. So.
I'm not denying.
I know that. You're just, you're talking about how you do business and we respect that.
Face to face.
Yeah, we got, we got it. But I just don't want that to minimize the need for appropriate record preservation to Murray's point.
Because coming from a legal background as a secretary, I mean, one of the big things was, if something goes into litigation, your private email addresses, et cetera, are discoverable.
We understand that. I understand that. Mine are discovered all the time by, by legal bodies. That is understood when I'm dealing in a situation like this. I have other situations where I have hundreds of, of emails that are discoverable. And you know what? There are legal bodies, including the SEC and others, that don't ask your permission. I've had my, my cellphone taken from me at a board meeting. Say, we'll give it back when we're done with it. So I'm used, I'm used to that. And it's, it's, yes, if I have them on a private, on a, on a private server of any kind, that's what happens. And that's, that's record preservation.
Aware of that, that there's a liability behind that, you know?
Yes. We all know that. Well, I, I think we have. We know it now. We know it now.
You're, I figure county, we are well aware.
Yes.
Yes. And yet in county, I still, I don't have, and I don't have a county email as a county planning commissioner.
That's, you know, that's why, why.
It was considered unnecessary for the few that I get a year because I'm not dealing with the people that are, and again, we're ready, we're an advisory board for the most part and act accordingly.
Office, office, you manage the ability to have a county cellphone if you want it.
Yeah.
Um, to conduct business on. Some choose to use it, some don't. I choose not to, which means I, means I don't conduct business on my cellphone.
Yeah.
Which means that people wanna reach me, they're not gonna reach me during the, outside of the office, cause I'm not gonna have my computer with me.
Yeah.
So that's, I, I, but again, it's kind of played with, you know, we have records, we, we have, there are retention records, there are retention schedules.
Yeah.
It's, a lot of it's automated, done automatically by, yeah, through the IT part.
Yeah.
That's, is, that's set up after certain, at certain dates and times. Um, I know that from our perspective, a lot of our records are permanent public records. Which is why, which is why we have an entire room of stuff.
Yes.
In the old St. Francis building, that is full by the, that room is full by the way. Stuff, um, including subdivision land, but building plans taken back in the sixties.
But it's still need to be kept.
Because it's still a public record. And in fact, um, we had to rebuild a, a particular municipality's rec, subdivision plan records from ours after their records burned when their storage building went up. So we had to rebuild, we had to rebuild it because it was, it was all gone.
Is that Mount Joy? No, no. No.
And, and one of the things that was missing from the file was Diller's application. There was no application for what he wanted to do. And I was surprised at that. So, like I said, record keeping, for these, I mean, and it relates to all these maps and stuff that Mr. Merkel's talking about. And the, and the accuracy of each property. So, but thank you for the explanation.
All right. Our next, uh, next meeting is, what, twenty-second December.
Yes.
Week of Christmas, so, uh, and again, that, we're gonna be sending out that, that letter, request for letters of interest, right? Or, no, we're in the, on the postal.
We'll post it, yeah. And, and I would, um, offer, if we don't have a plan that needs action, we don't have to have the meeting. So, that's something to consider. I mean, we cancel county meetings all the time if we don't have a, a plan or something that needs action. Yeah.
Mine doesn't, there's no necessarily any mind. If I'm the only thing on the agenda, you don't need it.
But I just wanna give, I just wanna give the public note, you know, notice. Cause I don't want somebody to think, uh, we're gonna have a meeting and then we don't have a meeting.
It also spends township money for sitting in there doing nothing.
Yep.
Cause we're all getting paid.
Yeah, I forget that. But you're absolutely right.
If you decide not to.
Is there any other discussion? Was this just an informational thing? Was that what the? Oh, from Clark Cromer, right?
Yes, that was.
Time extension request.
Yeah, yeah.
I make a motion, do you, John?
Motion's been made to Roxy. Second to Tom. All in favor, say aye.
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 So move.
Happy Thanksgiving, everyone.